Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the July 9, 2007 edition of your City Council and redevelopment agency. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the general rule of legal standing one way or another under our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on the agenda, our changes to the order of agenda. Are there any requests for change? Seeing none, we'll move on to number three, report from closed session. City Attorney Lonzo.
I think you'll report from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Number four, council communications and announcements. Any council members have an announcement or something to add?
I'll just mention very briefly, I attended the Sam Seder luncheon last couple of weeks, and one of the things that they did pass out was the new sustainability report for San Mateo County, and I would certainly encourage all my fellow council members to take a look and see how we're doing. As always, affordable housing remains an area of issue, but there's also a couple of other areas that they did point out, and I think that it's important that as a community, as we continue to look at growth and future developments, that we also consider sustainability. So, I would encourage city staff to get a couple of copies, perhaps make them available through the library as well, in case any local residents are interested in taking a look.
Thank you. Matt?
The other thing that I brought that I thought was of interest was in the senior center brochures. I had mentioned last council meeting how our San Carlos Children's Theater got an award and was lauded for all its work and efforts and so forth, and they do have some shows coming up in July through August 5th. It starts July 26th through August 5th, and they're on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights at 7:30, and Sunday's at 1:30, and the showing is over at the Heather Elementary School Auditorium, and they're showing Stone in the Road and The Somewhat True Tale of Robin Hood, so encourage the community to look at that and support our children's theater.
Very good. Thank you for bringing that up. Bob?
I have nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Let me just add, and many of the, much of the public already knows, but in the Yahoo Green City Contest, we did very, very well. Thanks to our San Carlos Green Group, we placed third in the country and first in the state. And as we mentioned before, we were awarded 4,500 compact fluorescent light bulbs because of that, and we received the first 500, and I believe they're all gone, but the next 4,500 should be here within a week. So, if you haven't received your bulb, please come by City Hall and take advantage of this program, put it to good use, save energy, save the climate, and help everyone do a better job with the environment. And that's all I have, so we'll move on to reports of council, to council rather. The first item is our final report for the Flooding, Land Use, and Creeks, otherwise known as the FLUC, Ad-Hoc Council Committee, and Brian will give us the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. You will recall that last June, the City Council appointed an ad hoc committee to study flooding, land use, and creek issues, known as the Flooding, Land Use, and Creeks Committee, or also known as the FLUC. They were established for a one-year term from June 2006 to June, excuse me, July 2006 to June 30, 2007. This is very similar to the previous ad hoc committee that you created on athletic fields, which had a term of nine months rather than 12 months for this particular group. You will see in the attachment, A, the City Council gave the group a very specific charge to study during that 12-month period, to look at issues such as creek setbacks, flooding, interagency efforts towards creek regulation, and sedimentation. The group held an average of one to two meetings per month during that one-year period. They generated three reports to the City Council. One was a list of priorities from the Natural Resources Report, specifically the creeks and watershed section. That was in November of 2006. They also gave the council some comments on the draft drainage master plan in November of 2006, and there was some minor wording changes that were taken from their recommendations and added to the document. The council also received from the FLUC a letter in April of 2007 expressing their feelings that perhaps more changes to the draft master plan should have been made, and they also recommended that the council expand the scope of that document to include a new watershed plan and also to look at citywide waterways. And as you know, at your last meeting, you postponed further consideration of that document for a period of 10 months until the regional water board regulations are issued. In the report, we also go through some of the highlights of the FLUC's meetings and activities over that 12-month period, and we also talk about the FLUC's meeting with creekside owners that occurred in June. I think noteworthy of that last item is that the materials that the staff developed, specifically Mr. Survey from Community Development and Mr. Mottari from Public Works, have been posted to the city website, and also Mr. Survey is working with the Community Development staff to develop some additional literature that were requested by members of the public. So at this point, the FLUC's term has ended as of June 30th, but as you see in the staff report, they have recommended a reactivation, and the members of the FLUC would suggest to the council that they continue on, both the ad hoc group for another six months, that the membership remain the same, and that they tackle four new items that they would recommend to you, and those items are public education, scrubbing all city ordinances related to buildings near creeks, training the city staff, and preparing and dealing with riparian ordinance. Two members of the FLUC are here tonight, both Len Mademan, the chairman, and Dick Edmundster, who is the secretary of the group, and you may wish to address any questions or comments to them. This item is on your agenda tonight as a report to council. The other comment I would make is that if the council is inclined to deal or grant the request to reactivate the FLUC, we would suggest that we put this on your next agenda as a consent item for action. So that's the final report.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? Would either of the members, Len or Dick, like to speak to the issue?
Good evening, Len Mademan, San Carlos. Thank you, Mayor Davids. I guess I would just comment briefly that we did have the community meeting, and the mayor was there. In fact, it was so well-attended that he found himself a seat in the hallway outside the doorway, because the room was full, and we were grateful for that, for his attendance, but we were more grateful that there was that much interest among members of the public, including the people sitting in the hallway listening in. There were over 50 people there, and they expressed quite a bit of appreciation for the fact that they were invited to a meeting like this, and they said when the last ordinance was done in 1987, they wished that there had been a community meeting prior to that or as part of that process, and so they were glad to be able to express their views. And I also wanted to say thanks to the city staff, to Mr. Survey and Mr. Mottari, for hearing what they said and making some changes to the city website and proposing a public information process. The items that we had talked about at our last meeting, which was a couple of weeks ago after that community meeting, to continue to work on were really in response to our work over the past 11 months and the input from community members. And those items included taking a look, as Brian said, taking a look at the ordinances that affect creeks and the riparian ordinance, to look at how staff relate to each other on this issue, because as you know, one department, Public Works, is responsible for everything that happens below the top of bank, and another city department, Community Development, is responsible for everything above top of bank, and the residents know that, and they know that when they try to deal, they try to propose a project that affects the creek in their backyard, that frequently they have to go to two city departments, and they commented on that and hoped that there was more of an opportunity for kind of a one-stop-shop approach to the city government in regards to dealing with residents when they have creek issues in their backyard. So that was one issue. Another one, as Brian mentioned, is public information and education, and I think there's a lot that can be done in that area, and I think what the city is doing is a start, putting information on the website, but I think there's a lot more that can be done. So I'll let my colleague, Dick Edmundster, make a few comments as well.
Dick Edmundster, I live on Carmelita on Polgus Creek, and I'm one of our eight members. I think five of us live on one of the creeks, which makes it an unusual committee, I think, and we're very appreciative of having the people who are there dealing with it on a day-to-day basis having an opportunity to have input. We're very anxious in the next six months in particular to start reviewing the city ordinances that relate to creeks and land use along creeks. I think it's important to have the FLUC review our cities, particularly our, the cities' riparian ordinance. The ordinance protects habitat and reduces the flow of sediment and runoff into creeks. However, there are features of the ordinance that we think should be at least reviewed. I'd like to give just a couple of examples, although there are quite a lot. The ordinance currently requires a 25-foot setback from the top of the creek bank. So if the creek is down here, and this is the creek bank, this would represent someone's backyard with a 25-foot setback in which no building can take place. And the city enforces this quite strictly. We heard from one fellow who said he wanted to put in a gazebo out by the edge of the creek so he could listen to the water, and was told, no, he couldn't do that. But the city engineer and also other agencies also encourage a sloped bank to allow for vegetative cover and natural or bioengineered erosion control, so it would look something like this with the creek here and a sloped bank that could be planted. But the definition of top of creek, which starts the 25-foot setback, here's the top of creek here, if you slope your bank, here's the top of the creek, and the 25-foot then goes out here. That extends the setback area and reduces your buildable area. So in other words, if you do the right thing, sloping your creek bank, you're punished under our existing system. The ordinance also prohibits unnecessary runoff from properties along the creek, and I understand this, because personally I have a rec room at the rear that drains into the creek, and when there's a storm, there's a trickle of water that comes down and goes into a concrete slough that goes down into the, into the creek. So what happens then? Well, during a storm, my trickle meets a real torrent of muddy water, and you might suppose that this torrent is the result of many little trickles directly entering the creek, but it isn't. In fact, just upstream from my house, my creek is piped for about a half-mile to the city limits. It reaches, the creek resurfaces at the back of Devonshire Canyon, but the creek is much smaller there. So where does nearly all the water in the creek come from? The water from every street in San Carlos and from every driveway and yard is funneled by the storm drain pipes into each of our three creeks, and this is important public information. As the stormwater emerges from the pipes into the creeks, it is also moving very fast because there's nothing in a pipe that impedes the flow. So what happens when a high volume of fast-moving water enters a creek or stream bed? It destroys the natural habitat and erodes the creek beds and creek banks. The creekside property owners then try to repair their banks at considerable expense. To add insult to injury, as one property owner told us at our meeting, the city also seems to treat the property owners as the bad guys in all of this. This is unfair, but the worst part is that the real problem isn't being dealt with. We're worrying about the trickles and doing nothing about the torrent. These are just examples. There are other problems with the existing ordinance, at least issues that ought to be looked at. The FLUC's original charter included a review of the riparian ordinance and a review of the master drainage plan, however, has been discussed, both of those items have been delayed. We're hopeful that we will, in addition to looking at the ordinance, have a chance to have some input to the general plan process as it relates to creek habitat issues as well. So we hope very much that the council will see fit to renew our charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for either Brian or Dick? If I could ask either one of you a question regarding continuation, as you know, we have a task force that's operating under the Natural Resources Report as well, and the task force is basically interested in the same material that you all want to work on, such as public education ordinances, setback, and so forth, and considering the time in which we're going to need to get additional information from the state before we can really deal with the riparian ordinance and with some fact behind us, and the condition that we are moving into a general plan review, which will include all this. Question I have, do you really see the need to continue FLUC, and could you better serve the public and your cause by joining with those in the task force, getting a bigger base of interested folks to move forward and be able to continue the process on that end? This would also save the city, considered around as taftime, and supporting on an ongoing basis until we really have an opportunity under the master plan, the general plan, as well as the new ordinance information.
Yeah, I guess my response would be, FLUC doesn't have a cause. We have people there, we have people represented on the committee who very much are pro-property rights, and we have people who are very much pro-creeks. That's different from what I see than the natural resource, the outgrowth of the Natural Resources Task Force. So our function is to provide, let's say, a cross-section of city opinion about issues that the council should take up. That's different than a group of people volunteering to do things to improve the condition of our creeks. So, you know, getting to the other point you made about the timeliness of this, certainly flooding is off the table, as the city has asked us to comment on the drainage master plan, and that master plan, which was first being considered by the council 11 months ago, is now looking at another year delay. The pace of the general plan process is something that may or may not inform ordinances. General plans, as you know, are general in their nature and set goals for the city. Ordinances look at very specific issues that residents have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. I think a group of residents is, with diverse opinions, is uniquely qualified to give you advice about how ordinances affect their daily lives and their pocketbooks. The process of creating a general plan, which could be easily an 18-month process, I would just, for all the people that showed up at our meeting and expressed frustration at their current situation right now or their projects over the past 25 years, I would just, let's say, it would be unfortunate to go back to them and say, well, in two years, we'll start the process of providing citizen input to city ordinances, because, you know, as I said, they were hoping to have citizen input in 1987 when the creekside ordinance was, the last creekside ordinance was created. So, you know, it may not be the perfect time to look at these issues. It may never be the perfect time. Maybe two years from now would be a better time, but as far as a group of diverse citizens looking at how the city does its business, I think it's a different kind of mission than the Natural Resources Task Force.
Do you think you can, Len, do you think you can do this in six months? You've been out a year, and when you look at the list of charges, I don't see much. I know you have your own opinion in terms of sedimentation, in terms of watershed. I don't see any of those interagency effort or any recommendations regarding creek setbacks, although perhaps I am not privy to the process you went through, but tell us what you're going to do in the next six months that's going to make a difference.
Well, what we're going to try to do is try to have the city come out with information to educate the public about what their rights and responsibilities are. There's no question, in all the people who were sitting in that room two weeks ago at the community meeting, there's no question in anybody's mind that came out of that meeting that people don't know, don't have any guidance from the city on what to do, and when they go to the city, it's a frustrating process. I mean, you know, maybe that's the kind of, the kind of interaction you get at a community meeting, is you don't get a lot of people coming there saying what a great job the city's doing, but if you sat at that meeting, you could not come away with the conclusion that these people have clear guidance on how to deal with their property, and the city needs help with that. That wasn't one of our early charges, but that's definitely, I mean, that's definitely something that the community came to us to, and in the November 30th communication, a letter between us and the city council, that was the first issue on the letter, was it's already clear to us, and this was seven months ago, that public education and information is critical. So I think that's an area where the city definitely could use the help, and as I said, I'm really glad that Public Works and Community Development is responding to the community meeting by taking up that issue. And the other area is, again, looking at these ordinances, and I don't, you know, I don't have an opinion that the city is going to adopt anything we recommend. We made recommendations before that the council and the staff ignored, and that's just part of the process, and we understand that. We're advisory. But to then say to the people in the community that we believe the ordinances are in good shape, or we believe the ordinances are in good shape, at least for the next few years until we get a general plan, I don't think that cuts it.
Okay.
And so, as far as what we can come away with, you know, these are a group of volunteers, citizens who care about this community, and they're going to do the best they can. Whether or not the city adopts it, you know, I long ago given up on that process, but do you want to add anything?
Just really quick, actually, I had a couple of questions for staff. It seems to me, first of all, I'm struggling with this ordinance, because first of all, ordinances, which is the law, need to be consistent with general plan, and if we're looking at a rewrite of our general plan, it seems to me premature to be modifying ordinances now and then potentially having to go back and spend the staff time as well as the, I know, consultant dollars and attorney fees and everything else to modify them again potentially in four years. So my inclination would be to sort of pull the review of city ordinances kind of off the table at this point from that process until we get a better, more clarity on the general plan, especially the Natural Resources section of the general plan. However, I'm wondering, just in terms of staff time, what it would take to potentially staff a creek subcommittee of the Natural Resources Task Force? I mean, if we were to look at, because I know in the past we've done, some of our standing committees will have subcommittees that are just within that to look at one particular issue, and I do think the FLUC committee has done a nice job just in terms of public education that perhaps wasn't there before, and may be able, if they're volunteering their time, to look at better ways to sort of put in layman's terms what some of the city's regulations are at this point in time as it relates to creeks and creek setbacks. It may not be a great solution, but Brian, perhaps you could talk to-
Well, let me say a couple of things. First of all, as it relates to the general plan, I believe that, and again, Mr. Survey may want to comment as well, that it is the Community Development Department's intention to talk with both the members of the FLUC and also with members of Natural Resources, whether or not they're standing groups at that time. I mean, obviously, Natural Resources has long since been disbanded, but yet we have a list of the members of that group, and they are going to be involved in the general plan, and that's been the city's plan for some time. I think the same is true with the members of FLUC. We have the list of FLUC members, and as part of the general plan process, it's Community Development's intent to involve them as well. So I think that regardless, I think as you noted, in the original charge of FLUC, there was an opportunity to look at things like the riparian ordinance, the creek ordinances, you know, for whatever reason, they didn't get to those in their 12 months that were allotted. I think in terms of staff resources, at the end of the day, I think that's up to the city manager. As you know, at the end of the 12-month assignment I had, I'm now working on the green programs and the climate protection work. I'm guessing that the most appropriate assignment here would probably be either in Community Development or Public Works, but that probably means revisiting the council's strategic plan and see what items we might pull off of that list to create some capacity for this project. So I think if the council directs us to reinstate FLUC and put that on your next meeting, I'm anticipating that as part of that staff report at the next meeting, staff would come forward with you in terms of how we would tweak your priority list and who we might assign to the sort of next generation of FLUC.
And just a follow-on question, just for clarity. I know San Carlos Green is sort of a grassroots effort within San Carlos. Are they receiving any staff support from the city at all?
No.
And so they've picked up sort of the sustainability charter or banner and are taking it and staffing it with volunteers without actually the use of city?
Right, that's right. The only resources we have for San Carlos Green, and for that matter, all of the Natural Resources spinoffs, is we do have a $5,000 allocation the council approved, and that's money the staff has to work with them. So far, San Carlos Green has not frasped for any money. And sort of the way we're working with them is, I sort of envision them as working on a volunteer basis with the community. I'm envisioning, in effect, I'm talking right now with the Chamber of Commerce, of having them take a similar role with our business community, and then I'm working with the staff on the city piece. So we're kind of divvying up the green and climate issues that way, and I think as Mayor Davids indicated, I suppose there is an opportunity for the Streams and Watershed Group, I believe it's called, the Volunteers, which as I understand it right now, they are focused on cleanup efforts, which was a major theme of the meeting that Mr. Mademan referred to, and it's in the staff report, people wanted to know who cleans up the creeks, how are they done, whatever. In fact, I believe the mayor's comments after our meeting in June was, he said, I think that Barbara Patterson's volunteer group has a lot more work ahead of them, because a lot of people identified cleanup they would like to see. Another interesting factor, by the way, in those two groups is during FLUC's tenure, because they were a council-appointed committee and were fully staffed and subject to the Brown Act, a majority of FLUC was not able to participate in the other group because we would have had to formally notice it. And sort of one of the benefits, if you want to call it that, of FLUC's termination in June is now the FLUC is free to, you know, work with that other group without any Brown Act requirements, noticing, or any of that stuff. So there is that, and I guess really part of the question here is whether or not you want to continue, this is a formal council-staffed and sanctioned group, or whether it makes more sense to fold them together, and I think that's a call for you to make.
I guess from a, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, Brian's correct in terms of staff support. I had a meeting with San Carlos Green, and I've also been meeting with the Streams Task Force just to give them input from the council level and as I see it from the city level, but staff hasn't been present, we haven't required it, and I think the, you know, to the credit of San Carlos Green, they've done a very good job getting it out of the box. The Streams Group has not been so quick, although they do anticipate being involved heavily in the stream cleanup in the fall, but we had a meeting with them while the San Carlos Green meeting has been meeting on-
Yeah, and I would just say the distinction too with San Carlos Green, I mean, they are purely a volunteer group, they don't meet, they're not a council committee, there's no agendas, minutes, none of that staff stuff, and I think Mayor Davids is right. I mean, they have been very high-energy, they've achieved a lot, almost an amazing amount in just a matter of really a month or so. I must say that if there's a prototype for a volunteer group in town, they would be it, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I just, to my council members, I want to be sensitive of using our volunteers' time, especially, and make them feel like they're doing something that's worthwhile and that is actually adding value, and I'm just, I'm cautious of being inclined to put them on hold just until we get the general plan more in motion here, and also don't want to tie up staff time with sort of just spinning and staff not being able to do anything really until we do get more traction on the general plan. So my inclination would be to not reactivate it, but to encourage the FLUC members to actually reach out and to get involved with San Carlos Green and the Streams portion of the Natural Resources Task Force, kind of, until such time is, we're kind of back ready to reactivate FLUC in perhaps it's a couple of years, and I apologize, I am sensitive to the, you know, a lot of creek owners wanting to know what's within their rights or not within their rights, but to me, that's really more public education, and I think at this point, it would be premature to be considering or scrubbing ordinances in light of, we've got a general plan that's coming up, that all of our ordinances will need to be in compliance with the general plan, so we will have to, staff will have to take a tremendous amount of time to go through all of the ordinances and to ensure their compatibility. So that would be my inclination at this point, and I want to say to the FLUC members, you know, we certainly, I've appreciated the work that you've done and the time that you've taken in putting this together and all the work that's been done to date.
Bob, or Matt?
Well, I just, a question of the staff, I mean, I appreciate if it's like a appointed committee by us, it has to have the minutes, it has to have the notice, it has to have all that.
Right.
I guess I'm confused, a bunch of people can get together and talk about anything. Is, and maybe it's a question more for Mr. Mademan or whatever- Is, maybe it's a question more for Mr. Maderman or whatever, do they feel, do you feel you need a staff person at a meeting, or in other words, do you have to be designated?
Well, and I guess, and I'll let Mr. Maderman comment as well, I think the real question is, is it a council commission, you know, with that premature of, you know, being a formally appointed group or is it a volunteer group?
I guess maybe Mr. Maderman can comment on that. And again, I'm just trying to figure out a way here to have a win-win on both sides of the aisle of, I mean, it's great to have a staff member, I guess, there for some guidance or some resource or whatever, but anyway, that was, I think you understand why I'm coming.
Yeah, absolutely. And I share your question about that. Another member of the Fluke Group just joined us. I guess my response would be getting back to, you know, what the city needs. And from my perspective, the city needs people who are committed to improving the environment of the city. And I, from what I know of San Carlos Green and the Creeks Task Force, there are great groups of people that are committed to that and that want to spend their time to volunteer to improve the city. And I think that's great. And I participated in some of those meetings, not San Carlos Green, but the other ones. And I think that's great. I also think the city needs attention by citizens on what, especially what property owners know and can expect about dealing with the creeks in their backyard. And, you know, I just, I just feel like it's obviously your decision on whether this group exists, but I just feel like if this group goes away, which it certainly can and it was planning to do, that the city will be where it was the past 20 years, exactly, since 1987. And to so many of the property owners, that's unacceptable.
I guess my point is, and again, I, you made that point earlier and I got it, I just, I guess I'm, is there a designation of formality versus informality? I guess, that's, I mean, I don't think any of us are saying, thanks very much, go away, we never want to hear from you again. It's a kind of a thing where the formality or the informality of the group, and I'm not necessarily one to necessarily roll you into another group or roll this group into that group per se. It's just a matter of, does it have, do you feel it has to be a formalized situation like it has been to be effective, or can you still be effective if you're not as formal?
I feel like having the imprimatur of the city council helps.
Okay.
It doesn't necessarily help, it doesn't necessarily help in the sense that our recommendations become new ordinances, but it helps as far as, let's say, getting people to show up to that community meeting. If we were a group of citizens who cared about creeks and we sent out a letter, I think it would be much less successful than having presentations by city staff, having a group that's sanctioned by the city council. That adds validity to our work.
Okay, that was my question, yeah. That was, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure. Sorry it took a while to get.
No, it's all right.
Well, I was a big part of getting this thing going. And part of it came out of serving with Don Eaton on the Building An-hoc Committee. And we saw with that that these issues with setbacks and creek ordinances and the frustration of homeowners was a big issue. So it dates back at least that far with council struggling with the issue. And in actuality, I know it dates back even further than that. And I also know that within my first year on council, some of the major correspondence I got from citizens were people who were dealing with flooding issues, particularly on Greenwood. And so I'm just, and partly, I guess, also because of the business, I'm aware of the fact that we've got some huge issues here with creeks and creek setbacks and people's knowledge or lack of knowledge on how to deal with their property and can they build, can they not build, what do they do if they have a structure that's currently in the creek that's illegal, so on and so forth. And I think we need to deal with this stuff. I don't, I do not agree that we should wait until we wrestle with the general plan and get it finished. I think Mr. Maderman makes a good point. General plans are exactly that, they're general. And I do think Mr. Savay, he's got enough professionalism and knowledge to be able to handle the issue if he knows that we've got a group dealing with creek ordinances and he's working on a general plan along with our staff to come up with things that are general that don't get in the way of something that is specific, that is going on at the same time. I don't think that's impossible. I am frustrated with, when I look at the list and the task that we gave to Fluke and what they were able to do, I'm dismayed at what they were able to do. They didn't handle the setback issue, they didn't handle intergovernment agency coordination. But it's not the fault of the members, it's not the fault of Len Maderman or the chair or any of those folks who are members of Fluke. It's just a matter of, I think what they ran up against is, how does government work? Slowly and oftentimes inefficiently. And I know some of that from talking to Mr. Maderman directly, because I'm the council liaison with their group. And so he and I have had a number of meetings. Just dealing with the other two agencies that, three agencies that we border, the county, Redwood City and Belmont, and trying to figure out what's going on in all those areas was not easy, and it's a little bit like herding cats. And I know that from experience, because I tried to have meetings with those groups before we got Fluke started. And some things started to get off the ground, Iowa Ruskin was interested, Rose Jacob Gibson was interested. And I don't remember anybody from Belmont being there politically, but they had some staff people. And we got going and then the thing fizzled out. So I understand it's a frustrating process. On the other hand, I do think Fluke did a good job of uncovering some other issues, one of them being this issue of the ordinances and at least vetting them, looking them over, and doing some work on them, I think is a good idea, and it would start to get to the setback issue, which again, needs addressing. I think they were exactly right on the watershed and storm drainage RFP, and that was my point of bringing in this article, which by the way, had a lot of interest, and the city clerk asked me to bring it back in, make copies so that she could give it to some people who had asked for it. This town has an interest in that kind of thing. How do we do storm drainage without just putting in a bunch of concrete swales and converting our creeks and so forth? How can we do it more naturally? That's something that I think this town is interested in, and Seattle has shown us an example of how it can be done, and I think we need to address it. So I see no harm in at least giving this group a six-month extension. That gives us the opportunity as a council to keep our finger on the pulse and know what they're doing and keep a close watch on it. But I do also agree with Mr. Maderman's valuation of things, that when you're looking at San Carlos Green, when you're looking at natural resources and the subcommittee of that that deals with creeks, you're dealing with people who are in advocacy. Fluke is not that. Fluke is a cross-section of citizens, that's the way we appointed it. When we interviewed, that's what we looked for, that's what we appointed. And so I think you get a more balanced approach of creek owners, property rights, people who are, you know, want to see things green and so forth. And I think that's what we would be looking for as a council when we look at these issues in finality, not just advocacy. So my opinion is we should give them a six-month extension.
Let me ask a question of staff. In, rather, 2003, we did a planning study on creeks. And I recall coming to the council and the council taking a pass because there were just too many issues that didn't seem to tie into the plan, too many exceptions, how do we deal with exceptions? And so forth. And I would imagine that study has value as we get into the master plan or the general plan process. So there's something on the table, and I found it last night, I didn't take time to read it, but it, as I recall, was a pretty interesting discussion, a lot of material when it came out. The thing that concerns me on the, you know, on the ordinances is that I would hate to spend a lot of time doing an ordinance that has not considered things like this plan or whatever else we might find as we go through the general plan process. I think we're kind of on a new start, there's material available to us. But scrubbing the ordinance at this time seems near to be a waste of time. I think taking the ordinance and interpreting it to the community and letting them know what's on the books and what they can and can't do is very valuable. And having attended that meeting, I think the public would very much appreciate that. So my feeling in terms of what Fluke would be doing would be to take a pass on the ordinances, but understand what they are, because the time will come soon when we start talking about that for general plan purposes. Public education continues to be a valid opportunity. So Brian, you recall, and I'm not recalling in terms of.
Well, let me make a couple of comments in terms of your, what you're saying, Mayor. First of all, in some of the documents that you refer to, at the very first Fluke meeting, we gave them copies of the draft riparian ordinance, the work of the Natural Resources Task Force, current, you know, land use element of the general plan, et cetera. So they did that request, in some cases, in other cases, planning and Public Works gave them a stack of documents to work from, because at the beginning of the process, we did envision, as Councilmember Grokot did, that they would probably delve into both the riparian ordinance and this top-of-bank discussion, but as the mayor noted, that did not materialize. I think as far as ordinances, I do think it is likely that some of that discussion will occur at the general plan, and since Community Development is already envisioning interviewing the members of the Fluke, it might make sense to ask them when they're interviewed, what changes they would recommend, and perhaps pulling that information out at the beginning stages of the general plan process, since they are on the list of people to interview, as are the members of natural resources. And as I'm sure the mayor knows, some of the members of Fluke and the members of natural resources, there are commonalities, there are several people who are on both groups. So, you know, I think that by interviewing both groups, we'll probably capture all the thoughts of both natural resources and Fluke, and that some of that could be put in. And I think as far as public education, I mean, obviously, Mr. Savay's group has taken that on after the public meeting. I think it's so new an assignment, we really don't have time, enough time yet to really know what his crew will come up with, although I would suggest that if the council is not satisfied with what Community Development comes up with in that arena, certainly you could either convene an ad hoc committee like this in the future, or perhaps, as Mr. Griselli suggests, it could be something more informal. I think that you can certainly talk with members of the community, much as Mr. Savay is intending in the general plan, without reconstituting a group. I mean, obviously, we're going to talk to the natural resources group, but we're not suggesting to the council that you put them back in live action as a task force. So I think that there are some options here. The key question, I think, is, you know, do you want to go beyond just hearing from them and their thoughts and actually reinstating them as a committee for, and then I think beyond that, the council needs to think about what sort of charge you would give them. I mean, obviously, there's an original charge you came up with, there's now a revised charge they would suggest. I think at the end of the day, in addition to deciding whether or not to reinstate the Fluke, it's also up to the council as to what things you'd want the Fluke to work on, because after all, they are your head hoc committee.
Very good. Any other discussion with council?
Well, I would just concur with your comments. You know, I think in terms of public education, and I know in the staff report it said that Al Savay is going to be working with the planning staff to prepare some handouts, which I think were obviously as a result of that meeting, I think that would add value and that I would obviously encourage Mr. Savay to go and to work with the Fluke members or former Fluke members to make sure that it's really going to meet the, you know, sort of meet the city's needs. But again, I mean, I just, the thought of scrubbing all city ordinances, I mean, really, the tough issues, and I can imagine why Fluke wasn't able to get to sort of this creek setback and definition of top-of-bank and things like that, is because, I remember when I was on planning commission, must have been 10 years ago, this setback, creek setback came through, and it was actually specifically related to the property behind Bell Market. And there's the creek that runs through there and what the setback was and all of that type of thing. And you get that sort of natural conflict between the people who are proponents of a larger setback because of the preservation of the creek and the natural habitat versus the property owners who want to be able to put the gazebo right there on the creek bank. And so having a committee like Fluke, which does have that diversity of opinion which we so sought, it would be a very tough discussion, because you have the property owners and their rights to use their property as they will versus sort of the more naturalists and the riparian proponents. So I can imagine that that's probably why that didn't get much traction in that group. And it seems to me that a committee like Fluke might almost be too small to have that discussion, because we are all San Carlos neighbors and it is a small community. So again, I, you know, I want to be mindful of using our citizens' time and, as well as staff time in this time of budget cuts and everything else. So again, I would, I would like to just sort of not reactivate Fluke at this time and encourage them to go out and to join with natural resources, to continue to do what you're doing in the community, because I think it does add value, and to work with Mr. Savay and the planning staff to continue to develop these public education materials. And in the meantime, we'll have the public, or the general plan going forward with the public process around natural resource. And I think there's going to be a tremendous opportunity for public input throughout that process.
Any other statements of preference before we move ahead with the motion?
Well, I don't know that we can move ahead with a motion, as I'm looking at the city attorney. We're not going to be doing that. The question I was trying to call here, I was going to ask through the chair, is if we want to discuss this more, we need to agendize it. Do I get paid for doing this, or?
No, but you're learning very well.
Thank you. I think we need, it says here, if we just wish to reactivate it, but I guess it's sort of almost if we wish to not reactivate it. I guess if we wish to not reactivate it, we don't do anything, we just smile and it goes away. But if we still want to discuss it, and perhaps we need to with our fifth member next week, our next time, although the city manager, I don't know if we have time, is there space on the agenda for the next, to discuss this?
We expect that it will be a relatively full agenda because of the fields issue at the next meeting.
But it says here that it would be on the next.
Well, you know, we could agendize this at any future date at the council's discretion. I mean, the mayor and I have worked on agendas, and if this issue or other issues related to this need to be brought back, we can schedule it accordingly.
Well, the only reason I would anticipate, or I would encourage that it be the next time is because we will have all five of us, at least anticipate having all five of us. And as the summer goes on, we're not, we may not have a second meeting in August, then all of a sudden, it's August and September and we're into the, in the next quarter. So I mean, again, I'm only asking that if we wish, if there is, and certainly Councilmember Grokot indicated he would like to continue it, and I'm a little on the fence on it, and perhaps the mayor is, I don't mean to speak for the mayor, perhaps he is too, we don't know about our fifth member, that we would agree to put it on the next agenda for action. And then we'd have some of the same discussion, unfortunately, but we would have it again, and then we would be able to legally and correctly vote on it. But I'm through the chair, whatever the chair feels is appropriate.
Well, I'll say that I appreciate everything Fluke has done, I think they worked hard on their mandate. However, I do believe that the city and the staff and the citizens would be better served in more informal races, where they come together as a unit with the other group and perhaps more, and continue to stay involved in terms of working with Al Savay and city staff on ordinances, on public education and so forth. I think the idea of having a formal commission, something that's subject to Brown Act, something that, you know, takes the reader of the support is fine, but I, at this point in time, considering everything right now, general plan coming up, new statutes coming down from the state, it's just, it's not the right six months to do it. It seems to me that it comes later on, if it comes at all. And in interim, we're going to do a good job, and I think a better job, on a more informal basis. So I would, I would suggest that we allow Fluke to deactivate and continue on as a task force.
Bob, since you're the fence sitter, I'm guessing the pressure's on you to.
Well, it's two, it doesn't make any difference where I go, because it's two, so it doesn't, I assume you have the same.
Yeah, I've already.
Assume you have the same opinions of the mayor, so it really doesn't make any difference whether I want to do it or not, because you need to have three.
Well, no, I mean, it's, I think for consensus, so if you feel strongly in support that they ought to be continued and not. So if you feel strongly in support that they ought to be continued and not continue on an informal basis, then I think that, even if it was two people that want to put it on versus two that don't, I think that's direction to staff that it needs to come--
My point is that I don't, that's why I asked Mr. Mademan about whether it's formal or informal. I don't necessarily think it should, and I don't think any of us thinks it should go away. I think, but it's a matter of whether the formality of it should be there. And, you know, I can certainly appreciate the mayor's comments, and I tend to agree with him on a lot of that, that the formality of it can sometimes work against a group as opposed to working for a group. So--
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that we go ahead and agendize this for, so that we can actually discuss and vote on it at the next meeting, with the understanding that, you know, we've vetted our opinions here. The person we really need to hear from is our fifth council member. And in the meantime, Bob might lean one way or the other more strongly. I don't see it taking up, you know, an extreme amount of time at our next meeting, just, and as always, none of us talk to Mr. Lewis or Dr. Bob, we're probably in the clear.
Actually, just through the chair, if I may ask, Steph, I mean, is there any urgency to getting it on the next, I mean, if they, if we don't reactivate them at this point, we could reactivate them in a month, two months, six months, at any point in the future. So, there isn't any urgency to getting this on our next meeting, other than, out of courtesy, I think, to the FLUC members?
Well, my point is, I want to make sure that we have five of us when we discuss it, whenever that is. And again, I don't know that August is, I mean, that's fine, I appreciate your thought. And if it's not July, because I know the next agenda's going to be very crowded, we're only got one meeting in August, and maybe we'll all be here for that first meeting. I don't know. I know I will be, but I don't know whether the rest of the folks will be here. So I would, I would agree with you that the first possible time to talk about it, and agreeing with Councilmember Grocott, if it's not next time, then as soon as we can, when all five of us are here, if the mayor would take that as a, sort of a comment from my side.
Well, the city manager and I can agendize it at the appropriate time. In the meantime, it's officially deactivated, because time is up. And to reactivate it, we'll take an action to do so, and a little more discussion on the part of the council. The final paragraph, the staff report does suggest that if we want to continue, that staff will work up some procedures to try to support it, and who's going to do it, and all that sort of thing. I would suggest that you not do that. I would assume that we need some discussion as to whether it continues before we go through the effort of trying to figure out how we're going to continue it. So I would not expect that the meeting where it is getting agendized, that we will have much of a report from staff in terms of continuation, because I think the court is still out in terms of continuation. Makes sense?
I hear what you're saying, and we can put our efforts into the education and information efforts that we've already begun.
Right, okay.
For the chair also, I think that I would ask my fellow council members, as well as I'll be thinking about it as, really what their charter should be. Because I think that the four items that they're proposing, you know, I really think some of them may be premature, specifically the scrubbing of the ordinances and the riparian ordinance, other than I would like to see them happen, but as part of the general plan update process. And then the public education piece, I do think is worthwhile, and I would encourage you to continue to do that with or without the charter of the council, as well as, you know, working with staff to make sure that they're available, that they have the most recent information available on sort of best practices in terms of creeks and riparian settings and things like that, which I know they've been doing for quite some time, actually outside of the purview of this committee. So, you know, I think we ought to be, if we're going to ask them to continue for six months, I think we need to be very specific about their charter and what is included and what we would like to see out of the end of that.
And our ability to support that charter.
Yeah, exactly.
Because we talked in staff time here, we need to make sure we can cover.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With this discussion, two questions have come to mind. We're making two assumptions, one by myself and one by Councilmember Doherty. My assumption is that Al Savay could still, and his staff, could still work on the general plan while scrubbing of ordinances going on. I'd like to hear his opinion on that. And the second assumption was that the group, why the group did not tackle the setback ordinances, and that was a comment by Councilmember Doherty, and perhaps Mr. Mademan would like to speak to that.
Through the chair, I would recommend that we do that when we have the agendized item.
I think in terms of Lynn, yes, but if Al has something to say about the wherewithal to scrub ordinances prior to the general plan review, it might be helpful.
Al Savay, Community Development Director. Typically, what you would do is you would wait until you had your background information, you did your studies on the state requirements, the local requirements, what other cities are doing in the area, and what the nature of our creeks is, maybe take a look, a closer look at the riparian settings. And we actually anticipate doing that as part of the general plan. And so, going back to the discussion that the council had, yes, typically, that's what you would do, you'd take a look at the big picture and gather your data, and then you'd go and see if you need to update the ordinance after you look at the general plan. It could be some time, but you'd get some really good information by doing it that way. On the other hand, I think as Councilmember Grocott mentioned, it's not impossible to do it that way. You know, if you directed staff to go out and do the ordinance at the same time, we would go ahead and do that too. So we're flexible, we'll do what the council needs us to do. What I would suggest is that we look at this as part, you know, of course, in the next meeting, but if it is put into a work item for a Community Development Department, that it'd be done as part of the next strategic plan schedule after August 15th. We have a strategic plan now, and we're, we have other items to complete before August 15th, and so we'd like you to perhaps consider any additional work as part of the next strategic plan.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And with that, we'll put this to rest, and I will remark to get it back on the agenda for additional discussion and decision. And thank you very much, Lynn and Dec, we certainly do appreciate everything you've done, and we look forward to doing more as we go along. Thank you. It's now time for public comment. This is a period where the public is invited to come forward and address the council on items that are not on the agenda, but any public members who'd like to speak to the council. Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the consent calendar. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by a motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Anyone on the council who'd like to remove anything? Staff? Public?
I would move approval of consent calendar items.
Second motion.
Go call, please.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. Next is item 8A, which is adoption of a resolution setting sewage treatment charges for fiscal year 2007, 2008. The parvies will introduce those.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the scheduled meeting of July 10, 2006, City Council adopted ordinance setting sanitary sewer rates for all user categories for three fiscal years, including 2007, 2008 fiscal year. And based on the rates there, the residential rate for this coming fiscal, this fiscal year is $438.14 per unit, and that's what the ordinance indicated. And based on those rates set by the ordinance, the staff has calculated the charges for every parcel within city limit, and now, resolution of City Council is required to place these charges on the property tax bill.
Okay, any questions for parvies? Motion to approve?
Actually, it's a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who'd like to address this on this issue? Is there a motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
No in favor?
Aye.
No, a motion, please.
I would move adoption of resolution number 2007 dash--
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, setting the sanitary sewer rates for the years 2007, 2008.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go call, please.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. Next is also a public hearing, which is adoption of a resolution setting National Pollute and Discharge Elimination System, otherwise known as NPDES, program fees for fiscal year 2007, 2008.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, the fee for the NPDES has not changed, it remains at $20 for a single-family residential. Again, based on that fee, staff has calculated the charges for every parcel within the city limit, and again, City Council resolution is required to place the charges on the property tax bill.
Okay, any questions for parvies? This is a public hearing, would any member of the public like to come forward and address this issue? Seeing none, is there a motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
No in favor?
Aye.
No, a motion, please.
I would move adoption of resolution number 2007 dash--
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, setting the NPDES program fees for fiscal year 2007, 2008.
Second.
Go call.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. This is item 9A, which is authorizing a contract for economic development and redevelopment consulting services with the Rosnell Spivac Group, RGS, RSG, excuse me.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Request for proposals for economic development services was released to several qualified consultants for recruitment of an economic development and redevelopment services consultant for the city of San Carlos. And the intent of hiring an economic development consulting firm is to assist with initiation of a city's recently adopted economic development plan, the implementation of the redevelopment agency plan, and also evaluation of an agency bond issue and business recruitment and retention. And there are several other services that would be included with that. Staff received proposals from Kaiser Marshland and Rosnell Spivac Group, RSG, and both our top-tier consultants in California for economic development. And on June 21st, or 25th, the interview panel interviewed both the consulting firms, and the panel used rating criteria such as comprehensiveness of the response and understanding of local issues, redevelopment, negotiation, and marketing experience, and previously, previous experience working with the business community, and of course, the cost of the project. And the interview panel's final consultant recommendation is based on the extensive level of RSG's experience and their track record of success, their ability to meet established deadlines, costs, and also their enthusiasm for the project. And the, there would be no cost to the general fund for this project, as the consulting services are budgeted for the next year through the redevelopment agency fund and also the redevelopment agency housing budget. And it's recommended that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Rosnell Spivac Group, RSG, for ongoing economic development consulting services. And I'm available to answer any questions, and Alexis Mittel is here from RSG as well.
Okay, any questions for them? I did have one, Al, in terms of the $85,000. Do we monitor that, and as we come to the end of the year, we know what we've got and how we're going to use it, or what is the magic number? Why is it not 60, or why is it not 100? What's good for 85?
Well, the 85 was an estimate that RSG gave us, based on what we think we want them to do as part of the economic development plan and some of the objectives that were there. So that was their estimate. In fact, in the redevelopment agency budget for housing and redevelopment, we actually have a little more than that budgeted, and we budgeted it before we had these proposals in anticipation of this work coming up. So basically, it was a time and materials basis for the first year of operation, and that was their assumption. We do monitor what they do on an item-by-item basis. They would tell us on a regular basis, here's what they did, they would give us a cost estimate for the amount of hours they spent, who worked on it, and what exactly they did. So we do monitor that kind of thing pretty closely.
Okay, any more else? Yes.
Go ahead.
No, I, so this basically runs from July 1st to June 30th, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
My concern actually had to do with, I know, I went through and looked, and I'm not concerned with the consultant, I'm more concerned with the response to the RFP and the attachment, and it being on a sort of loosely-based time and materials basis. I know that, I read through the RFP, and it was very specific about the scope of services, and yet, the response to the RFP, the proposal which is being attached as part of the contract, are really more, we can do this, we can do that, but it isn't, there aren't any specific deliverables called out. And in fact, in looking, I mean, I see they've got about four specific deliverables, including an implementation plan, midterm year review, pursuant agency bond issue, recruit businesses to the east side, and initiate redevelopment catalyst downtown sites. And I'll trust your judgment on this, Mr. Savay, but how does that sort of coincide with what I see under the scope of services, which were things like implementation of the city's redevelopment implementation plan, which is a very specific deliverable type of item? There's a facilitation of compliance with state housing reporting requirements. I mean, there's, there's quite a few very specific things that you've called out in your RFP, as this is what we'd like help with, and the response back was sort of, we can do this, we can do that. So perhaps you can tell me how you foresee this moving forward, just in terms of management of their time and of the $85,000.
Yeah, that's correct. The scope of services that went out was more specific with regard to some of those issues. And I agree that some of the, what they proposed here is general in nature, but they did hit the major issues in terms of, you know, what we were asking them to do, as you noted, implementation of the redevelopment agency plan and that type of thing. And so, one option would be to have Alexis Mittel come up and address the council in addition, and I think that I would like her to do that. But we would ask them to do these things specifically, we've discussed these specific issues with them, and in the interview process, they had very specific answers for the way they would do it. And in talking to them about these things, in fact, both consulting firms, they both have the expertise to implement these specific items in the scope of services. So just to let you know.
Sure. No, I guess my question is really more around management and oversight of the $85,000 as it relates to what clearly as part of the RFP process was kind of like your hit list of things that we'd like to bring in a consultant to help us out with the city, and then their response, which is really a bit more vague, and perhaps I'm just not reading this, in redevelopment agency speak, but just if you could take a minute or two just to explain to me and my fellow councilmembers about sort of the oversight and how you plan to manage them as a resource and use up this $85,000, and then I guess that's a follow-in to the mayor's question about managing the $85,000 and tracking the use of that money.
Well, the first, one of the first steps that we would do is we would sit with the consultant and scope out the next year's work. So we'd come up with a task-by-task work plan for the next year. So while what you see here is somewhat general, we would sit down with them and come up with a work program for the next year with specific implementable tasks and reports. And we know that we, for instance, we are reporting things to the state comptroller's office for RDA housing, like you saw in the last couple of council meetings. So there are some, you know, legal housecleaning items that we do know we need to do legally, and we have our city attorney and other RDA legal counsel that also assists in advising us on that. And we would ensure that those, those legal issues are included in some of the tasks. And then we would look at each of these task areas with the consultant, and we would lay out a plan, sort of an attack plan for each of these specific items, and say, okay, here's what we're going to do step by step, by what date, here's what deliverables are required from the consultant, whether it be report to you, or analysis that needs to be done, or other legal requirements that need to be prepared. So for each of these specific things-- So, for each of these specific things, from a management perspective, we would again sit down and come up with a game plan for the next year and break it down into very specific tasks based on the, each of the, of the heading, under each of the headings. And then we would approach them one at a time and move forward and see what, in addition, we would see what staff resources need to be dedicated to these as well. We are in the process of interviewing for a redevelopment and housing and economic development manager, and so part of the management of the consultant would be under the purview of that manager, which answers to me, the community development director. So, there would be someone who's more dedicated on a daily basis to management of these tasks, and a consultant would be working with them, with city staff, and city management.
So, in your view, this is really more of what I would consider a blanket PO. It's a, not to spend more than $85,000 and figure out, here's our prioritized work plan, how many of these things can get done for the $85,000. My only concern is, is that based on all of the things that you have listed under your RFP, it's their, I think, best guess that $85,000 ought to cover it, but when you get actually into the meat of this and you start scoping it out, I guess my concern would be that you don't all of a sudden realize you really needed $100,000, or $95,000, or $65,000, and come back to us with, with a need for more because the scope didn't actually, wasn't actually reflected in, in the response to RFP, so.
The city manager would like to respond to this?
Yes. In terms of full disclosure, this is necessarily vague. This whole economic development plan has a lot of different twists and turns that we might expect over the next year as we get into specific projects. You know, Wheeler Plaza could go any number of different ways as a specific project. And the proposal here is really on a time and materials basis at an hourly rate for services provided by various members of the firm, and it's stated actually within the proposal as a minimum of $85,000, certainly were constrained in any event by our budget value for, for the project. I think, you know, in all honesty, what we ought to do is report back to you periodically with respect to the tasks that are being performed, the expenses that are being incurred, and if, you know, if the relationship is working out well, I mean, I think we would come back to you and, and give you that progress report and let you work with us in determining whether or not it's a relationship that you'd want to, to continue with prior to, to next year. In my experience in the past, these kinds of agreements would be entered into for, on a multi-year basis, because projects within the economic development realm don't occur within a neat fiscal year timeframe. And once you are working with somebody who's got the trust of the, and confidence of the council, of the staff, and are working with you to put projects together, I think you're going to find that, that you really are going to want it on a time and materials basis within the confines of a budget that, that has the flexibility to carry on over, over fiscal years. And so, we would ask that you give us the flexibility, I guess, to implement the, the plan pursuant to the constraints within the budget document along the time and materials with the cost per hour guidelines that are contained within the proposal here. And I will say that, you know, we didn't base the, the selection of the firm upon the cost proposal.
Yeah.
But in looking at the comparative, or comparable cost proposals, this is, I mean, what would you say, 30%, 40% less than the competing firm in terms of the hourly rates? And so, we think it's a very, a very competitive proposal on, on cost as well as quality.
Yeah, absolutely. And in fact, I mean, I would just, from my perspective, I'd like to see kind of, after you've had these discussions about the work program and things like that, just a high-level summary. I don't want to see it broken down by, you know, for this implementation plan, media review, its principle at six hours, at, you know, this cost. Not, I mean, just really more kind of buckets of, you know, of the $85,000, roughly, you know, 20% is going towards implementation plan review, 10% towards this bond issue, recruiting business to the east side. Well, that's an unknown number because, you know, it depends on how many contacts you have and things like that. So, just to kind of, some sense of how the money's being allocated, which I think then will transfer into how the money's being prioritized as well, and I think we'd all be interested in that.
We would monitor it by program and report it accordingly, yes.
Okay. And probably, you know, quarterly is, is good enough for, once we have the, the first response back.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
On page 18 of their proposal, they have the fee proposal, and they pretty much say exactly what Mr. Savay talked about, that they, if selected, that they would anticipate developing a specific work plan. And as the city manager said, it does say that this, that this is a minimum budget of $85,000. So, I would agree with Councilmember Doherty that as soon as that's all worked up, something reported back to us would be very helpful so that we know where we're going, at least for the first year, and what those costs might be.
Very good. Anything else?
Heard you make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion, authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the RSG Group for economic development and redevelopment consulting services in the amount of $85,000.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes.
And the final item on our agenda tonight is to authorize the mayor to send a response to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury regarding electronic communication among city officials. The, Brian is here to speak to this. Go ahead, Brian.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As you know, from time to time, the Civil Grand Jury comments on procedures that cities and counties follow, and it issues comments, recommendations. This year, one of their comments to all cities in San Mateo County, as well as the county itself, regards the use of email by elected officials and also record retention programs. And so, we, at the staff level, have looked at their report. We have prepared a draft response that would go out under the mayor's signature. Mayor has looked at this, and tonight we are bringing it to you for any suggested comments or changes prior to sending it out. As I'm sure you're familiar in dealing with these in the past, the city, under state law, has 90 days to respond to comments from the grand jury, although you're under no obligation to agree with or implement their recommendations. You're simply under an obligation to comment and indicate what you feel on each of the recommendations. So, that's kind of where we are, and I'd be happy to field any questions from the council.
Any other comments on the?
I actually had one point of clarification. If we do indeed make the decision to open up and provide email accounts to planning commissioners, would we, would that necessarily extend to other commissions like Parks and Rec or Arts and History? I mean, are we opening up Pandora's Box by creating planning commission mailboxes, or would it make more sense to have one mailbox that would be the planning commissioner's mailbox that then could get forwarded to each one of the planning commissioners?
Well, there are a couple, a couple things, I think, Councilmember Teagle Doherty, that relates to commissioner mailboxes. The first thing, as, as we looked at this at the staff level, is we've never really received any requests from the residents for any of the other commission email. It's the only request we ever get are for your email addresses, frankly. So, I think that was in the spirit in which we answered or put together this draft. I think there is obviously a cost to the city in terms of email boxes, in terms of licensing the software, but I think the bigger impact would be on the city clerk's department as well as IT in terms of checking the mailboxes, archiving the responses if there are requests. And so, I think the concern that the staff level certainly, again, given that we're cutting budgets and we have a severe budget crisis, as we all know, in the general fund, is how far you'd wish to carry this. I don't think if you necessarily want to extend email accounts to planning commissioners, you necessarily have to extend it to every other commissioner. This is certainly a direction the council may wish to take, although at this point, I think the staff's observation again would be, since we've never had anybody request an email address from a planning commissioner, the question is, is that money well spent?
So, on just the flip side of that, most of the time, when I was on planning commission, emails would go to planning staff, and generally, the planning director, and then copies would be made and distributed as part of the packets. And I assume the same process works for staff on Parks and Rec and for, you know, many of those others. So, that process seems to be working well, and since you haven't had any requests, it must be well communicated. So, I would, on recommendation number three, I mean, my preference would be probably not to open up email boxes for all of our commissioners. But, no, I, other than that, I didn't have any comments about the latter.
Any others?
I'd just like to make a motion to authorize Mayor David to send a response.
I'll second that motion.
And do we roll call on this, Christine? No, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And that concludes our meeting. Thank you very much. Look forward to the meeting on the 23rd. We adjourn.